Call to order Village of Hazelcrest, regular board meeting. Pledge allegiance. Trustee Grant.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with dignity and justice for all.
More complete. Trustee Grant.
Here.
Trustee Moore.
Here.
Trustee Rams.
Present.
Trustee Rias.
Here.
Trustee Slaton.
Here.
President Alsberry.
Here.
We have a corner. Where, please? Ask the honor.
Every head bowed in the place today. Dear heavenly God, we thank you for this another day, a day that we've never seen before. We thank you for the presence of these your people in the village of Hazelcrest. We ask that you come into this meeting, open up the minds and the understanding of those who are here. We ask that you pour blessing upon all of our trustees and, most importantly, our mayor. We also ask that you bless the village of Hazelcrest and all those folks who are involved in every decision that's going to be made on this evening. We ask that you keep us, sustain us, and dispatch your angels of protection around us as we enter this holiday season. And we pray these blessings in your name. Thank God, amen.
Any call response?
Go for it, Alsbury.
All right, we have one. Said, dear Mayor Alsberry and village staff, trustees, court, on behalf of the family of the Cascade.
Cascade.
Cascade, thank you. I wish to thank you for your condolence and beautiful flowers arrangement sent to the funeral home on November the sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Also, for the memorial resolution to honor, make sure I say her name right, is Albina Theodore Cascade.
Good.
Okay. Thank you.
And this time, I'd like to read the resolution from the village for Albina Theodore, what you know as Dora Cascade. A resolution in a lovely memory of, whereas, Albina Theodore, Dora, as we were, Cascade, a sixty-year resident of Village of Hazelcrest, was united in a matrimony to Donna B. Cascade on October twenty-second, nineteen sixty, and to this union, one daughter and one son, one nurtured. And whereas Donna Cascade was a bright, shining light to those whose lives she touched, she was kind, caring, generous, and a devoted wife and loving mother. And whereas early on, Dora Cascade, at a young age, showed incredible operatic abilities. When her immigrant father died suddenly, Dora declined a full ride musical scholarship to the junior arc in Manhattan in order to help support the family. And whereas Dora was a dedicated volunteer of the St. Vincent de Paul, she voted the last two decades in helping families in the community through St. Nair's Food Pantry. Dora was voted outstanding resident of the year and received the citizens award from Bremen Township and Thornton Township. Despite her numerous awards and accolades, Dora believed that service to others was the ultimate reward. And whereas we do not understand the mysteries of death, but we do bow in humble submission to the will of the almighty God, a command of soul to our loving heavenly Father, was too wise to make a mistake and too just to do wrong. Therefore, it be resolved by Mayor Bernard L. Alsberry Jr. and the village board of Hazelcrest, that we do extend our sincere and heartfelt sympathy to the entire Cascade family. And we say to you, look to Jesus for your source of comfort. And whereas, be it foretold resolved, that a copy of this resolution will be given to the Cascade family and will be placed in our files done the eleventh day of December twenty eighteen. I'd like to say personally, Dora was just phenomenal. At her services, I said she was a one-person social service. She knew everybody, and she made sure I knew everybody who needed anything. Dora was the person that if you wanted to get turkeys out, she knew every person that needed one, and she knows the one who didn't really need one. And she would tell you the difference between the two. It was only, not only food, but help for medical services, or housing, or getting the lights on, or someone struggling to do anything, you could bet Dora was on the case. I met Dora back in two thousand and three, and we used to wrap gifts for residents in the community of Hazelcrest, and actually deliver gifts to their home, and had fed across the area, we surpassed the gifts out here in the village hall. That's when I first met her. And she hasn't stopped since. You know, she was just a beacon of light for our community, she's going to be surely missed. I want to thank Mr. Cascade for allowing us to use his wife. I think he worked her, him hard, as well she worked us, but I think he loved every minute of it. So I want to thank your family. Would you please stand up, Cascade family? I want to thank you guys all. Say something, you guys, okay?
Thank you. Quiet, Don.
So we thank you so, so very much. Also, Mr. Glenn, Clarence Hanks, Clarence Hanks was another person in our community that's been here for many, many years, over twenty years. Clarence was another guy who would help anybody to rent, and went to the same church. So it must be something over there in that church that make volunteers or something that make it second part of your life. Clarence was avid golfer, but anything you need, he made sure that you got. And he always gave you advice, and if you didn't listen to his advice, he gave it to you again. He's one of those guys that believed that if he didn't help anyone, then he didn't do what he's supposed to do that day. So it's very sad that we lose two great people from the same church community, and from our community of Hazelcrest. So at this time, please, I don't want to give a moment of silence, but give a moment of applause for these outstanding citizens from our community. I'll also thank the fire department, they're probably going to give this report themselves for the Christmas tree lighting that we just had, it was past Friday, it was phenomenal, the kids had a great time. I also attended the two-hundredth year birthday of the state of Illinois last week, it was phenomenal, they did a great job. It's funny how you think you know your history, and I thought we only had three presidents from the state of Illinois, but I always forgot Ulysses S. Grant was from Illinois. So we had four presidents, including Reagan, from the state. Four presidents from the state of Illinois. I'm just saying, you know, just saying. So that was a phenomenal event, I had some great people attend. Mr. Our past president, Mr. Bill Brown was there, he was awarded Veterans Award by the Centennial Community, so it was awesome to see him there receiving an award. So it was a great, great event. And also, we had our commissioners lunching, brunch rather, the other day, we had about a hundred people there, it was phenomenal. I always want to thank the commissioners because they do all the work that we can't pay for. And so they outwork with the youth, work with the seniors, working with the community, work on the open lands, veterans, beautification, those individuals dedicate their time, well they can be doing something else to the community. So I want to thank them so, so very much for being just an outstanding group of citizens and residents who provide services to our community. At this time, we're going to have a swearing in. Deputy Chief Dale Mitchell. Mitchell. Dale Shalal Mitchell is a twenty, oh, that's your middle name.
Shalal.
All comes out when you start giving presents. Dale Shalal Mitchell is a twenty-six-year veteran of the police office with eighteen years with the Hazelcrest Police Department. Dale Mitchell in his career has been a patrol officer, tactical officer, special operation officer, community police officer, and be representative, a range destructive detective, sergeant, detective, sergeant, detective sergeant, and now deputy chief. Dale Mitchell has garnered several citations and degrees, including a bachelor's and master's degree in criminal justice. He's a graduate of Northwestern University of Public Safety Staff and Command, Illinois' law enforcement training, and standards of war executive, institute public executive role in the twenty-first century course, and the FBI leader supervisor, command and executive institute. Dale is married to his wife, Joanna, and also a police officer with three, also a police officer, with three children, Darrell, Taylor, and Ray. Congratulations, deputy chief.
Most of you know by now that our previous deputy chief, deputy chief Malcolm White is now chief. Malcolm White. Our village is their chief, and part of my goal as a leader here in the police department is to have succession plan in place. And having gone through the rigors previously, when we were looking to have a detective sergeant, then Sergeant Mitchell was selected to be that detective sergeant, and part of our succession plan is that you then, when it becomes available, rise to the level of deputy chief, so that is what brought him to this stage. I don't want to stay from there.
Raise your right hand. I, state your name.
Dale Mitchell.
Has been sworn to the position of.
Has been sworn to the position of.
Of deputy chief police.
Deputy chief of police.
Duesomely swear.
Duesomely swear.
That I will support the constitution.
That I will support the constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the constitution.
And the constitution.
Of the state of Illinois.
Of the state of Illinois.
And the municipal ordinance.
And the municipal ordinance.
Of the village of Hazelcrest.
Of the village of Hazelcrest.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Discharge.
Discharge.
The duties of office of deputy police.
The duties of the office of deputy chief of police.
Thank you. For the village of Hazelcrest.
For the village of Hazelcrest.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thanks. All right, say it. All right, say it. All right. 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 Congratulations. All right. Say it. 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 All right. Say it.
I'd like to thank the mayor, the village board, chief of police, and the citizen of Hazelcrest for giving us opportunity, and I promise to do the best job that I can. I'm going to make you all proud. Thank you.
Repeat that so we can record it.
Okay, with presentation for Omega Psi Phi fraternity.
Good evening.
Omega Psi Phi was founded nineteen oh seven, nineteen eleven. Omega Psi Phi fraternity was founded in nineteen eleven on November seventeenth, a hundred and seven years ago. We have over seven hundred chapters internationally, and this year, we was able to recognize your mayor, your president, as one of the citizens of the year for all the work he has done in twenty eighteen. He was recognized officially at our tenth district, I'm sorry, at our Illinois, Chicagoland Founder's Day banquet on November seventeenth, but we would like to come out and recognize him again in front of his peers, and his village, and his residents. So, Brother Alsberry, citizen of the year for Omega Psi Phi fraternity, Chi Lambda Lambda citizen. Whereas, the impactful service to others has been demonstrated through the president's leadership bridge program to the dedication to the citizens of Hazelcrest. Whereas, leadership to the uplift, the village of Hazelcrest and the surrounding communities, and the roles of president of Southland Regional Mayor Black Caucus, president of the South Suburban Mayor's and Managers Association, and mayor of Hazelcrest, has created the engine for economic opportunity and improvement of civic infrastructure. Whereas, the program Summer Open Land Experience, Youth Alliance, and Kids Club Foundation addresses the concerns of our youth today and presented it with opportunities that would develop them into future leaders. Whereas, being a trailblazer for future African-American politicians as being the first African-American elected as a Democratic Committee man for Bremen Township. Whereas, your faith has been instrumental in your success, and your willingness to keep God first has shown favor on your accomplishments. Therefore, it be resolved on behalf of Chi Lambda Lambda chapter of Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated on this day Tuesday, December eleventh, twenty eighteen, we recognize the honorable mayor, Bernard L. Alsberry Jr., for positively impacting, impacting the local and regional community in which he has proven to be loyal, a loyal leader with his dedication. Thank you, sir, for all you've done.
The plaque reads, citizen of the year, Honorable Bernard Alsberry Jr. in recognition of your distinguished service, loyalty, and dedication to the community. Chi Lambda Lambda chapter of Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated, December twenty eighteen. And to do it correctly, we officially present to you this plaque, Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated, citizen of the year award presented to the honorable Bernard L. Alsberry Jr. for your selfless service to the community from the Chi Lambda Lambda chapter, November seventeenth, twenty eighteen. Ray, I want to thank Omega Psi Phi fraternity, who are housed here in Village of Hazelcrest, with outstanding awards. I really appreciate their dedication to the community also. Okay, at this time, do we have anything from Sister Village Manager's report?
Yes, a couple things I'd like to report out. This, on Saturday, December fifteenth, please join the Veterans Commission of Hazelcrest for their Veterans Holiday Party. It will take place here at the village municipal center in the senior room. Hazelcrest, Illinois, six oh four, excuse me, Hazelcrest, Illinois, at six PM, they will be entertaining, food, and a great time to RSVP. Please call Vicki Anderson at seven oh eight, three four one, seven nine three seven. Seven oh eight, three five one, seven nine three seven. In addition, I'd like to take this opportunity to remind residents of our parking during snowfall restrictions. It will be unlawful to park any vehicle once, once snow exceeds two inches of height, and that counts for the various streets of Hundred Sixty-Eighth Street, from Western Avenue to Dixie Highway, Hundred Sixty-Ninth Street, from Dixie Highway to Park Avenue, Hundred Sixty-Ninth Street, from Murphy Avenue to Trappett Avenue, Hundred Seventy Street, from Murphy to, from Murphy to, and including Park Avenue, Hundred Seventy-First Street, from Western Avenue to Dixie Highway, Barron Drive, from Boja Avenue to Trappett Avenue, Dixie Highway from Hundred Sixty-seventh Street to Hundred Seventy-First Street, Park Avenue from Hundred Seventh Street to Hundred Seventy-First Street, Western Avenue from Hundred Sixty-seventh Street to Hundred Seventy-First Street, Wood Street from Hundred Sixty-seventh Street and Hundred Seventy-First Street, also in the following subdivisions, Apple Tree, Chateau, Hazelcrest, Highlands, Pace Center, Potawatomi Hills, Stone Bridge, and Village West. In addition, in the community, which is east of two ninety-four, commonly referred to as Hazelcrest proper, when there's a snow affair, it's also unlawful to park in the street with snow exceed two inches in depth, but that parking restriction is from eight AM to five PM as follows. On even days of the month, you can only park on the, on the addresses on the even side of the streets, and on the odd days of the month, you can only park on the address street numbers on the odd side of the street. Please note that residents that fail to comply can receive a citation starting at fifty dollars. That concludes my report.
Thank you so very much. Anything from Legal? Police Department?
Thank you, mayor, and trustees, department, and citizens. Just one thing, I just want to give an update, I was asked to give an update on the cameras that we were looking at to make available to the citizens. Not endorsing anybody, but Ring, the Ring has a system out that allows for citizens to purchase their systems in different quantities, and they actually have a portal where a citizen can, if something happens around their house, they don't have to give the police access to their camera system. They can actually download to a law enforcement portal the information that we would need, so that would keep us from having to interfere in somebody's system. They, that system is unique. Another company, Axon, they used to be called Taser, Axon, has, is starting to develop a system like that, but it's not as comprehensive as of yet. The challenge that we're finding right now is that because of the need, that they're overwhelmed with requests. They were supposed to come here in October to give us a presentation, they were supposed to come from California, but they've been traveling all over the country, and it's just been a tremendous demand on them. You know, initially, we were going to try to do this program on our own, but there's just so many moving bells and whistles that to get it to, look. There's so many moving bells and whistles that it is, it's difficult to get an whole program together the way we want to do it, and we don't want to reinvent the wheel because they have the resources, if at all possible. So I say all that to say that I'm going to contact them to see if they can expedite coming out to deal with us in the South Suburb. We're not just asking for them to come and talk to Hazelcrest, we're looking to do it on a regional level, so that it's more attractive to them, they're just coming to talk to us with the entire South Suburb. So I'm going to be talking to them and trying to get them out as soon as possible, and I'll keep the board updated on that process.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
That's it?
Yes, sir.
Public Works, you left. Special Services.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a couple items. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
On Friday, December fourteenth, due to some complaints about existing business without BOPs, which are business operating permits, the fire department, special service department will investigate several buildings for life safety and business operational permit issues. Also, if you would, please notice your report that you have before you, if you have any questions, I can answer those questions. In addition to those permits that we issued, we issued permits for the New Dallas Health Center on Hundred eighty-third and Pulaski. We're doing a facade treatment there, and also they participate in the COW SAC enterprise zone, so they get fifty percent of their fees, permit fees, from the village. Also, we, we issued permits to Advocate Hospital for their dock lift, lift, and also for their fire sprinkler permit for two docks over there, and that's about it. If you have any questions about the report, the report tells you about tickets that were issued, the service requests that were followed up, followed up on, and new businesses in the community.
So LA Furniture is now all their furniture? They sold?
Correct, they did. It's new ownership. LA Furniture.
Any questions, anyone?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
In reference to the software that we have back there.
Yes, sir.
Okay, where do we add, when using that, and how is this?
We're using the main style software today, and all the stations, I can bring in samples, if you like.
Okay, so how long does it take, you know, for a person to get pregnant now with this new software that we have?
We give them three days now, we, turnaround is three days now.
Okay. Okay. Back to Public Works.
I'll have a report this time, sir.
Okay. Human Resources.
Thank you, Mr. President. Board of Trustees, just two things. We completed our sexual harassment training on yesterday. Yesterday was actually the last of six training sessions, and I want to remind everyone that the sexual harassment training is for everybody, it's mandatory for everybody. Elected officials, anybody associated with Village of Hazelcrest operations. So I know, you know, Trustee Moore, Trustee Slaton, Trustee Grant, you all did attend, but what we're going to do is try to do a makeup session for those of you who did not get the opportunity to attend, and I know Trustee Rogers actually works during the day, so we might try to do something, actually during her Christmas break. I'm working with Bill Heffernan to do a makeup session, but everybody has to complete it. Secondly, today was the last day for open enrollment sessions, it was the last of seven sessions that we've had for eligible Village of Hazelcrest employees. We're complete with that, and the only thing we have to do with that is actually receive any and all changes, waves, and all of those things, but they do have until December thirty-first for an effective date of January first. That's it.
Thank you so very much. Fire Department.
I'd just like to thank the Community Relations Commission, for, you know, they, the commission is taking over the tree lighting ceremony. Ninety-nine and one-half percent of the work, or let me say, one hundred percent of the work was done by them, because I donated mine for no charge. I want to thank them for coming in and helping out, because that's what these commissions are supposed to be for, is what I've told, is to help out in things like, I think the mayor said that we don't have to pay them for, but they came and they've done a wonderful job. Asked out candy and chocolate wings and little gingerbread houses or grand cracker houses, whatever they want to call them, but they did, they did a great job. So thanks, thanks to them. That's my, my report.
Okay, thank you. Economic Development.
So just a couple of things today, I just want you to be mindful that one seventy-six-five Dixie Highway, the Hazelcrest Professional Building, as you see it now, has, the land has been demolished, the building has been demolished, and the land has been prepped for delivery, delivery of the modular panels, so that the building process can begin. So I believe that the delivery is scheduled for the week of the seventeenth, so we should see trucks coming in and out of that area as well very soon. Thirty-six oh one, West Hundred Eighty-Third Street, our new village hall, the interior demolition has been completed, the installation of the mechanicals and preliminary infrastructure has begun. We have invited the official board to please come. That's my, my report.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Economic Development.
So just a couple of things, uh, today, I just want you to be mindful that one seventy sixty-five, uh, Dixie Highway, the Hazelcrest Professional Building, as you see it all, has, the land has been demolished, the building has been demolished, and the land has been prepped, uh, for delivery, delivery of the modular panels, uh, so that, that the building process can begin. So I believe that the delivery is scheduled for, uh, the week of the seventeenth, so we should see trucks coming in and out of that area as well, uh, very soon. Thirty-six oh one, West Hundred eighty-third Street, our new village hall, uh, the interior demolition has been completed. The installation of the mechanicals and preliminary infrastructure has begun. Uh, we have invited the official board to please come out on Thursday between the hours of three thirty and four thirty to take a walkthrough of the facility just to see the progress for yourself. Um, I think you will be, uh, surprised at what we've accomplished in a short period of time. So that's this coming Thursday. As it relates to, uh, all of the construction par, uh, projects throughout the village, um, we have been working with all entities, uh, just to make sure that not only our residents, but the subcontractors and contractors that are within our village are given a fair opportunity and equal opportunity to take part in this construction. Um, to have a hundred and ten million dollars come through this village within the next three to five years is a huge undertaking, it's a huge accomplishment, and we certainly want to make sure that our residents and contractors are involved in this process. So within the month of January, um, Ujama Construction, uh, uh, Advocate Aurora, uh, which is South Suburban, also, which we know it as, and then, uh, Power Construction, they will be holding outreach, uh, workshops to make sure that we are speaking to those residents that qualify for possibly some jobs that maybe are union and are working independently, or contractors, uh, that are, uh, are qualified and certified to take part in the opportunities that we have available. So we're making every effort to make sure that we are, one, having that minority participation, two, to make sure that we're including our residents in this process. So both of those things will be happening in January, so I'm working with them to actually set our dates. Uh, basically, as we speak, we, we're meeting every week on all projects, okay? So, um, that's moving right along. AP Deli, uh, the permits have been ready in our period. Uh, you should see good progress within the first quarter of, uh, two thousand nineteen. They had a couple of rough patches with just their, their delivery and, uh, distribution, but they've assured us that they're back on track, they came to the village for a meeting. Uh, they also submitted a letter to us just to state that they were back on track and that they are moving forward. So you'll see that. And then Arminetti's Liquors, uh, I've been out there to their site a couple of, of times within the last week. Uh, it appears that they're making great progress as well. Uh, I do believe that they are trying to, um, submit for a business license before the end of the year. So it looks beautiful in that, uh, location, and, uh, the village is moving forward.
Thank you so very much.
Uh, excuse me, where's the Arminetti's, what's the location of that?
It's, uh, right in the strip mall, uh, by Maria's.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yep, yep, it's one eighty-two thirty.
Okay.
Kelsey.
Okay, um, at this time, can I get a motion for public participation for items on the agenda?
Move that we open the meeting for public participation for items on the agenda only.
Second. Move by Trustee Ramsey, second by Trustee Moore, to open public participation for items on the agenda, all in favor? At this time, anyone else to speak for items that are on the agenda, this is time to speak. Okay, can I motion, get a motion to close public participations, items on the agenda?
I motion to be closed public participation for items on the agenda.
Second.
And move by Trustee Moore, second by Trustee, uh, Rogers, first one's a job, Trustee Rogers, uh, to, to close public participation for items on the agenda, all in favor?
Aight, aight.
We're closed. Uh, first, agenda item, uh, Trustee, uh, Rias.
I move to approve the regular meeting minutes of November thirteen, two thousand eighteen.
Second. And move by Trustee Rias, second by Trustee Moore, to approve regular meeting minutes for November thirteen, twenty eighteen. Any discussion on this item? Rule call, please.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Ramsey?
Yes.
Trustee Rias?
Yes.
Trustee Rogers?
Yes.
Trustee Slaton?
Yes.
Motion carries. Trustee Rogers.
I move to approve accounts payable number nineteen dash fourteen, dated November twenty-seventh, twenty eighteen, in the amounts of three hundred and fifty thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two dollars and seventy-eight cent. And accounts payable number nineteen dash fifteen, dated December eleventh, two thousand eighteen, in the amount of three hundred and eighty-eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars and seventy-five cent.
Second.
And move by Trustee Rogers, second by Trustee Grant, to approve accounts payable number nineteen dash fourteen, dated twenty, November twenty-seventh, twenty eighteen, in the amount of three hundred and fifty thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two dollars and seventy-eight cent. And accounts payable number nineteen dash fifteen, dated December eleventh, twenty eighteen, in the amount of three hundred and eighty-eight thousand, six hundred and thirty-two thousand and seventy-five cent. All, uh, any questions on this item? Rule call, please.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Ramsey?
Yes.
Trustee Rias?
Yes.
Trustee Rogers?
Yes.
Trustee Slaton?
Yes.
Motion carries. Trustee Slaton.
Thank you, I move to approve the ordinance providing for the levy and assessment of taxes for the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen fiscal year for the Village of Hazelcrest, County of Cook, State of Illinois.
Second.
I, there are no amount in there, it's just the.
One necessary correction.
With the necessary correction.
Is there a correction to the motion that is, as is read?
Yes, it is.
What's the correction?
The correction is that they have a, uh, the, uh, the current, um, levy has, uh, incorrect language in it, and it needs to be addressed, so we need to, we need to, uh, either amend the motion or we need to restate the motion with the necessary corrections.
What is the correction?
The correction is that they have a cost in there that says nine million, uh, nine million dollars, three hundred, I mean, nine million, uh, uh, thirty-three dollars, thirty-three, thirty-three thousand, nineteen dollars and, and some cent, and it should be nine million, two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, uh, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars.
That's not in here.
That's a discussion, that's a, that's a, yeah, just correction on the numbers. The motion stands as ends.
Right.
We're going to make that correction, okay? I, I get a second?
Second.
We move by Trustee Slaton, second by Trustee Grant, to approve orders, orders providing the levy assessment of taxes for twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen fiscal year, the Village of Hazelcrest, Cook County, and State of Illinois. Any discussion on this item?
Discussion. Okay, we need to change the language in article.
Change the numbers.
We changed the numbers in article, uh, Article Three, Section Four, and those numbers should read, um, there's a, there's a worded amount that says nine million, uh, thirty-three thousand, nineteen dollars, and it should be nine million, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and ninety, and ninety, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars.
Correction noted.
I, I honestly, I don't see where.
Well, he just, that's a discussion, so we know that that's changed.
Okay.
We'll make sure that's done, but the motion standard is, we'll make those corrections, new conversation.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Rule call, please.
Trustee Grant?
Yes, as amended.
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Ramsey?
Yes, as amended.
I, excuse me, I don't see where there's.
You don't have to amend the motion.
No amendment to the motion.
It's just a correction.
There's no amendment to the motion, the correction stands as read.
Okay, alright, I.
So just, it's just, it's not amendment to the motion, it's just a correction to the numbers. The motion carries where it is.
But the, but the levy here that has to be amended though. Right, am I saying that correctly, it's the levy you're talking about?
The numbers have to be corrected.
Right.
Right, that's not in the motion, the number's not in the motion as far as the discussion. So in the discussion, we're saying the numbers have to be changed.
Right, so.
So it's not amendment to the motion.
But we're approving the levy.
No, we're approving the ordinance, we're approving the ordinance that provides for the levy.
But the, but, but there's some incorrect language.
In the ordinance.
Okay.
The ordinance that need to be corrected.
Yes, we all agree to that.
So we're.
We can say amend, and, and, so we're correcting it, do the discussion. So if you guys feel comfortable saying amended, it's not a problem.
The ordinance is amended.
It's not, it's not a problem, it's just.
Let's not stand, go back to this.
Still, I see where we're, we're not amending the ordinance.
No, correcting the numbers.
In the ordinance.
In the one. Blame for the number.
Yeah, we're talking about the ordinance itself, just like we would be talking about the minutes being corrected.
Yes.
The written words in Section two point four are incorrect and will be corrected, just like any other scribbler error.
Okay.
Uh, before the, uh, is.
Signed off.
Document is executed.
Correct.
Thank you.
The vote stands, I mean.
Yes, yeah.
Who's, who's they told?
You want to start over?
Go ahead, take the more.
Go ahead, take, go ahead.
Grant?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Rias?
Yes.
Rogers?
Yes.
Slaton?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Excuse me, Mayor, one sec.
Take your time.
Ramsey, you, you're able to vote.
Something happened to one of the people.
Okay, I'm.
Just to voice, because I'm not voting on you either.
Uh-huh, okay.
Okay, Trustee Grant?
Okay.
Oh, sorry, I'm waiting to get you raised here.
Okay, one sec. Pass everything off.
Okay, uh, thank you, uh, President Osberry. I move to approve the proposal for professional engineering services, water main improvements, Section two one nine, Army Corps of Engineers funding.
Second.
And move by Trustee Grant, second by Trustee Ramsey, uh, sorry. Uh, motion, uh, to approve the, uh, proposed professional engineering service water main improvement section, twenty nineteen Army Corps of Engineers funding. Any discussion on this item?
Yes, what is the funding? Do we know what the funding is?
So, uh, we have not received, uh, official documentation from Army Corps of Engineers, uh, as to the funding amount. Um, they have indicated that they are expecting, um, a funding amount, I mean, in around a million dollars, which means that the, uh, of that, the village will have to do a twenty percent match, uh, for that funding.
Okay, any other discussion?
So we're not approving a specific amount at this time, we're just approving.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question, so what's, what's stated in here is for the engineering services that Robinson has to do to design the construction project.
Oh, this is the design, yes.
This is for the design portion, yeah, and the, uh, the amount for this is at a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you. What, what question, manager, when do you anticipate, uh, Army Corps of Engineers, uh, being, being finished with that?
They had indicated to me that they, uh, obviously within the next month or so, next thirty days.
Next thirty days for the approval?
For they get, for us to get official notification, the actual documentation stating as to what the award amount.
Okay.
Okay, uh, question, so, so we're actually spending not just a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, we're spending three hundred and twenty thousand dollars because that's twenty percent of the million dollars plus the hundred and twenty thousand that we're giving, I mean, that, that, uh, that, uh, we're, that Robinson Engineering is getting for the, uh, the development, the design of the project.
Correct, so the, so the design work does not count towards the village's cost, uh, our cost share for the project. It has to be paid for, uh, uh, in advance of the actual construction part itself. So that, so our total price tag for this project is, is what I'm estimating is to be, um, I'd say about three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So also, also keep in mind that, uh, once we receive the award amount from the, uh, from the Army Corps of Engineers, uh, we do not have to accept the total award amount, right? We can decide that, hey, for whatever reasons, that, uh, we may not want to do everything that was awarded to us in that, uh, in that, uh, grant that we're receiving for the Army Corps of Engineers. So, uh, the numbers are soft right now, uh, but I wanted to give what I thought was the best projection as to the cost, so we can at least move forward with it at this time.
Any other discussion? Rule call, please.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Ramsey?
Uh, yes.
Trustee Rias?
Yes.
Trustee Rogers?
Yes.
Trustee Slaton?
Yes.
Motion carries. Trustee Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Osberry, I motion, oh, hold on, what is going on here, just a sec. I motion to revise the employee handbook, amend the harassment policy for filing, a client, a claim with I D H R and E E O C.
Second.
And move by Trustee Moore, second by Trustee Grant, to revise the employee handbook, amend the harassment policy for filing, and claim with I D H R and E E O C, any discussion on this item?
Uh, what will we change the filing process to be with E E O C and I D H R?
Just the extension of the days from one eighty to three hundred, yeah.
Any other discussion on this? Rule call, please.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Ramsey?
Yes.
Trustee Rias?
Yes.
Trustee Rogers?
Yes.
Trustee Slaton?
Yes.
Motion carries. Trustee Ramsey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, motion to approve the, uh, twenty nineteen employee benefit insurance rates.
Second.
And move by Trustee Ramsey, second by Trustee Slaton, to approve twenty nineteen employee benefit insurance rates. Any discussion on this item? Rule call, please.
That was Ramsey, for the motion, right? And who seconded?
Slaton.
Slaton. Okay, trust. Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Ramsey?
Yes.
Trustee Rias?
Yes.
Trustee Rogers?
Yes.
Trustee Slaton?
Yes.
Motion carries, Trustee Rias.
I move to approve RSM US LLP agreement to consult, to consult and assist with business process improvement project.
Second.
Move by Trustee Rias, second by Trustee Moore, approve RSM US LLP agreement to consult and assist with business process improvement project. Any discussion on this item?
Yes.
Yes.
What is this? What exactly will they be doing?
Let me explain to you.
Yes, so, um, we, we, from the, uh, the village, there are a couple of things. Um, there were items identified in the Whitley audit with regards to our business process improvements. Um, in addition to, there were some things that management wanted to have them come in and take a look at. And so they're going to be, uh, reviewing these processes, I'm going to talk specifically about what the scope of work is. They're going to be reviewing these processes and providing recommendations on how to make, how to make enhancements and improvement to them. Uh, and the scope of work includes, um, they're going to take a look at our, our current, um, receipt processes as well as, um, our future, uh, receipts processes, uh, processes related to our payroll, processes related to our, uh, dispersment, and also, um, process related to access to our system. Access to our system essentially mean M S I.
So this is just another layer of looking?
So they're going to, so they, as part of their work, they're going to, um, sit down with, uh, various staffers to get an understanding of what's involved in that process, from, for example, from when a department, um, reviews a payable to that payable actually going out to door, um, to the vendor, um, ensuring that, um, the steps in that process are, um, are secure. Uh, in addition to looking at, uh, for example, um, our processes for, um, adding access to M S I and then removing access to M S I, and then providing recommendations to, um, you guys as well as the management here as to what processes we can implement to ensure that those things are working, um, accordingly with minimum error and.
Didn't they give us on the audit review?
No.
Didn't they give us the recommendations of what we need to work on?
They recommended what we needed to work on, uh, it wasn't included in there how we need to work.
I'm just trying to find out where do we need to put another layer that we never had that before.
Um, well, this was identified as a weakness during the audit report.
Dude, I definitely looking at correct.
So, a weakness, but they came over that we need to work on.
That Whitley, Whitley did the audit.
Correct.
So Whitley did the audit, they identified a weakness, and now we're consulting with, uh, RSM about improving.
About addressing and improving.
Addressing the weaknesses.
Correcting, correcting.
Correcting the weaknesses.
And in that defense, uh, sir, the audit last year said the same thing and the year before.
The year before, we've been, we've been, uh, asked about this constantly in every audit we've had. We've never done anything about it.
And, but, I hear what you're saying, I, I do hear that, but the question is, I noticed that we, we said not, not exceed thirty thousand dollars?
Correct.
Is there any reason why we went that far?
Um, so this is based on, their proposal is based on the hours of work that will be performed by various personnel, um, on behalf of RSM for this project. So in the proposal that they provided to us, it breaks down how many hours, um, the engagement director would spend on this project and the, and associated estimated fees for the hours. Um, the so, the fees for the manager of the project, that's Mr. Argans, who is on-site, uh, meeting one staff and, um, taking them through the process of reviewing, uh, and, um, taking them through the process of reviewing, um, the business, the business transaction associated, uh, with the audit, right? And so, that number of hours that they estimate for his services, um, and the cost for those hours related to their services. Um, and then last but not least, there's also, there's three, and the third one is the accounting specialist, and, and their, and their proposal gives the number of hours, the rate for those hours, and the estimated cost. This, this process is going to take a, a, a total timeline of five weeks, from their start to when they can come back to us as to what their recommendation is based on the information that they gather. Um, at that time, I think you remember that Mr. John George said that, uh, he would share that with, um, management for us to provide input, and then make a presentation to, uh, the entire board as to what their review has found, as well as steps that they will recommend that the village implemented to, uh, address these items.
Any other discussion on that? Okay, roll call, please.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Moore.
No.
Trustee, uh, trustee Ramsey.
Yes.
Trustee Rias.
Yes.
Trustee Rogers.
Yes.
Trustee Slaton.
Yes.
Motion carries. Uh, trustee Rogers.
I move to approve the intergovernmental agreement for the provision of environmental health inspection services.
Second.
And move by trustee Rogers, second by trustee Ramsey, to approve the intergovernmental agreements for division of environmental health inspection services. Any discussion on this item?
Is, is this the contract with Cook County?
Yeah. Roll call, please.
Trustee Grant.
Yes.
Trustee Moore.
Yes.
Trustee Ramsey.
Yes.
Trustee Rias.
Yes.
Trustee Rogers.
Yes.
Trustee Slaton.
Yes.
Can't call trustee Slaton, I hear.
Yeah, you can call Slaton.
Yeah. Motion carries. Oh, yeah, she would ask.
Uh, I, I have a quick question, Dante.
Yes, sir.
Uh, in, in reference to item D, you know, and my question is, is that, uh, the financing of this project, uh, will that be coming out of water, uh, sewer? And if so, how much do we have in water and sewer that we could use out of that fund?
Um, to give, so I, I consulted with, um, previous, um, interim village manager, Mr. John Daly, uh, and from that research... From that research, um, I believe that, um, in two thousand and seventeen, it looked like in that, uh, in our sewer and water enterprise account, uh, I believe we had a surplus of over three hundred thousand dollars. Um, according to our most recent fiscal audit, uh, we're looking at a surplus of a hundred and eighty thousand, um, fiscal year two thousand and seventeen, um, excuse me, fiscal year two thousand and eighteen. And so, um, we wouldn't have to make a payment into fiscal year two thousand and nineteen, so if, um, if we carry a similar surplus in this fiscal cycle, uh, we'll probably be looking anywhere between six hundred, seven hundred thousand in that, in that account. Um, and, uh, the only thing that currently we have earmarked, uh, for a project that's coming out of that account is what we're paying for the pressure-reducing valve, uh, which is coming in at about, about a price tag of about two hundred and twenty thousand. So that probably leaves us about anywhere from four hundred to five hundred thousand dollars still remaining in that account.
Okay, I get a motion, open, open participation?
I move that we open the floor for public participation for any items.
Second.
Move by trustee Slaton, second by trustee Ramsey, for public participation, anybody who speaks, it's time to do so. All in favor?
Aye.
This time you want to speak, this time to go forward.
Emphasis on the sweet.
Happy holidays and a safe one to everyone. Uh, quick question. I hear we got a new village manager? Who is it?
We don't have a new village manager.
You have an intro?
We have, we will have an acting, but we haven't appointed anyone yet.
Okay, can we get one to keep one day?
People move, how many, you like, you saved your job a hundred and years.
Pardon me?
How many years you saved your job?
Uh, thirty-one.
How many people left that time, they keep their job and left and went and do something else?
No, they retired.
Okay, everybody don't retire. Sometimes people stay, sometimes people go, can't control it.
Well, try to keep one.
We always do.
Dominoes.
We always try to keep it. And we're doing great work beside that.
Okay.
Village manager will handle day-to-day...
So, 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 we still got personal or public works? Same person, Dante? Yes, isn't it right? Okay, well, two other questions. Do, are you all got the operator fix, and when you push the button, you can get a, a person instead of, the operator's not available?
We're still having issues with that.
Our phone services, we're still working on, they've been like that thirty, forty years.
That's been three, four years, five years.
It's been longer than that.
Okay.
We're working on it, it's old building, old area, we're trying.
No excuse. Last, last, last question.
Yes, that's, even a question, these are statements, but go ahead.
Well, statement, course, whatever.
Go ahead.
Uh, what, the stickers come in yet for the cars?
Yes.
Are you in? Thank you. Okay, 'cause I didn't think you wanted my money, I was gonna go to the, saw village and buy my stickers or something. Okay, thank you.
We'll take your money.
Okay, take care. Y'all have, again, a blessed holiday.
Thank you.
You also, thank you so much. Anyone else? Can I get a motion to close public participation?
I move that we close public participation at this time.
Second.
Move by trustee Rogers, second by trustee Grant, close public participation, all in favor?
Aye.
Before we go into executive session, this, you know, we had a couple of people pass, you know, we had Miss Catherine pass, and we had, uh, Clarence Hanks pass also. We also had, uh, Jack Lanigan pass, who, My Jack. And Jack Milanican was one of the pioneers in the Southland and, and developing a large business that provided services throughout, innovated services, uh, for trucking and for rail. He's the one who developed the, the lift that could take the, uh, off the trains, the train, I mean, the, uh, cabinets off the trains and put them on the trucks and transport. He's phenomenal in that. Uh, from that, it grew to twenty-eight different companies that he had, from racing cars to other lift companies to, uh, working with Panama Canal. Uh, he came to Hazelcrest many, many years ago, to, Hazelcrest allowed him to take two thousand, uh, acres of land and develop it. And, uh, from that time, he's always shown love for the village of Hazelcrest. He's always made sure, wherever his corporate office was, that they always had Hazelcrest stickers on every vehicle that he had, from Australia to Panama. I got a chance to meet him in twenty thirteen, and when I got a chance to know him and the family, they are some phenomenal people. And many of you heard the stories of him retiring, and they're coming from retiring